It's really one of the key, what we feel is one of the key items in economic development is transportation. So, we are hosting, we're working with the commissioners, we were waiting for them to finish budget. We'll be hosting a county-wide meeting, we may have two or three of them, but what we're going to try to do is identify with the businesses, the loads, the routes, if there's improvements that need to be made. I know on our big project, Project Lightning, everybody heard about for two years, that was one of the key factors. And so, that still has not been put to bed. And so, with that, we still want to identify and make sure that we're on top of, if there is a road issue, or a bridge, or any issues with transportation, that at the county level, the TAC Committee, the Regional Planning Commission, and MoDOT will be attending these meetings as well. And while we're not asking for anything, or trying to force anything down MoDOT, we're just wanting to make sure that if there's an issue, that we have a business that is, we wouldn't want them to close, or not, you know, divert the traffic. So, and we don't want that to be an obstacle for someone wanting to come here either, because that is a very key factor in some of the projects that we're working on. So, basically, we want to talk about it, we want to identify the projects, and we want to prioritize them. As the TAC Committee in our region meets, we want them to hear what our needs are. And at the state level, if funding doesn't change, they're talking about, you know, more putting things back on the county level. And so, we want to make sure our commissioners are completely aware of the entire county, and what the issues are, and again, so they can prioritize, and if there's any funding that would become available, that we could maybe partner together with several entities and try to get that. That's one of the meetings, and we kind of feel like that's going to be a very important meeting, especially with being the key issue here, transportation, economic for economic development.
Carolyn, while you're on that, I got a call from Brian Kefner from MoDOT, and he asked me down to go speak in just a deep to the Highway Commission.
Mm-hmm.
He didn't be there as well.
Yes.
So, I reached out to Alan Spell at MoDDD, are you familiar with him?
Yeah.
To try to get some, I've just begun it, but I need to get specific about the request for some data on what the economic impact would be to actually close, if we had to temporarily close that bridge, what would the data really, what would the impact really be in dollars?
And I'll get with you and help give you back the other information that we have, that we're going to go testify on.
I think we ought to coordinate that effort.
And something else with that, too, we continue, PCDA continues to meet monthly with, it's the Highway 54 corridor, and it's another partnership, again, the Regional Planning Commission goes, MoDOT goes, the state representatives assistants go, I mean, it's all attended, but it's a monthly meeting, and some people say, "Well, why do you go every month?" The reason is, because we want, we want MoDOT to hear that between Mexico and Louisiana, third Louisiana, that it is important to have the share of War Lane. If and when there's money, that that is one of the priorities that's on the list. And we have been attending that, actually, Alan Wenders and one of the commissioners from Audrain County and myself started that group several years ago to get that message, because I'm also on another committee in the Northeast, and Tom Bowlen is on it. And he would really like and support the route from Mexico to New London. So, it's really important that, again, the mayor, any representatives that we can get, go to those meetings, and just stay in front of them, and they're really good informative meetings, usually MoDOT is there giving a good report every month. So, that's something else that we're a part of, and it's just one of the, one of the meetings that we go to. One of the other things, the, I just wanted to pass on that, I was appointed to the State Solid Waste Advisory Board, so hopefully that will also bring back, we do have the landfill in our county, there's a lot of money in that goes into our county, that also goes out of our county. So, hopefully, we can bring back information, and I know there's grant opportunities that open up through our region, but we'll be able to have some more input on that, and maybe bring some more information back to local communities. We should be taking advantage of those solid waste grants on the recycling. The other thing, the CDBG, I'll talk about it real quick, we do have that scheduled to close, we are going to deobligate. Only reason we're deobligating, there's no marks against the city, but when this, when the grant was written and approved, we were going to move forward, we had two years to move forward with the business. That grant relies on the business's job creation, it's not for city, total unemployed, or low to moderate income, it's based on the job creation. So, with that, with the company not moving forward this time, we have to deobligate. With no money spent, it'll be a quick public hearing, the 18th, we'll deobligate. If, for some reason, the business chooses to move forward, or another business moves in, then we can reapply. And we can reapply with no marks against the city, and it does entitle for having an open grant as well, so. And there was no money spent on it, so. With that, we have several, we have some trade shows, we're also working with Missouri Partnership, we've got several direct mail pieces that we're working on, we're targeting some chemical companies, some chemical manufacturing companies, automotive. On the other side of the, outside of the city limits, what you saw in industrial parks, we have been working with the company on hold some site, continuing that, it hasn't gone away, it's just been on hold, not at our choice, but anyway, we are working with them on a regular basis, with the state, the governor's office isn't involved, it's, you know, they're doing everything they can, just the company has to pull the trigger. As far as the other industrial park area, we also have been working with the company that owns the land, and as soon as that is ready to put out on the market, we did a site visit, but they're doing the cleanup process, and once that is, they are going to let the county know when they're ready to market that site and let that, let that go. I know you guys have a long night, so I'll come back again and like give you another update, but if there's, unless you have specific questions.
I've just reflected through this process with Community Edge, it's really become apparent, even in our recent, when we're looking at the job, building job description, how critical our relationship is with you, and, you know, anything that we can do to facilitate coordinate, I just really want to extend a very proactive relationship there to help.
Sure, and we can come back on a more regular basis. The other thing, too, is something that we're always working on, and it's been a struggle, it's been a struggle for years, it's getting the building inventory and land inventory, so any help that you guys can do. And it's not just, "I have a building for sale." It's, "I have a building for sale, this is what we're asking for, and here is the utilities, the, I mean, the whole nine yards." It's not just, you know, fill in, fill in the blank, and they fill in three pieces, and then give it back to us, and say, "Well, we want to sell it," or "We want to leak," we don't know. It really doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere with, with any site selector, anything that we put out there. So, any help that you can do, we can always use building inventory, like you said, and we have sheets that, that we can, that we've created now, and we'd like to be very thorough. But as working with the Missouri Partnership, as working with the certified sites, and the site, the industrial park is certified, working with those, we're finding out that, you know, really, it has to be thorough. And usually, when we get leads, and the economy has been down, in the last few, several months, we have started receiving a lot of the larger leads, and something that would fit here. So, having that, and you usually have about 48 hours on the first call typically, respond to that, so if we could have everything completely detailed, it makes it so much easier just to turn around and hand it right back off. We're not waiting, trying to wait for the landowner, or the building owner, to give us the information that we need, whether it be the utility, or the water, you know, whatever it may be, the electric, or the water, or the, you know, the price. The price typically is key, and they just want a ballpark. And so, a lot of times, we find that, we get a lot of people that call and say, "Well, we have land for sale." When you ask them, well, it just depends on who it is. So, that just doesn't get it. So, but any help you can do there, that would, that would really help us, but yeah, and our door's open, anytime anybody needs anything, feel free to give us a call.
Question, do you leave counsel?
Not at this time, but anything's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Any other visitors like this week? Again?
Yes.
Charles, okay?
Charlie Perkins, Taylor Van Travers. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council members that supported efforts to do our work. I just watched this wonderful presentation, what the mayor says, and these other local business owners, about how great it is to work with our local government. I'm asking you, don't make a liar out of me, because I don't see it. This, we got to work together to grow our city. This piddling, I'm sorry, I'm going to say something, I can't, I'll be, I get a little emotional when I hear what goes on here, it just drives me crazy. We got so many, our efforts aren't concentrated on the right things, it isn't. It's, our city is dying, it's dying, and it takes efforts from him and other people, like you guys, and you guys have the power to do this. And if you don't want to do it, get off. You're dragging people down. So, I beg of you, let's work together and fix this, we can, you guys have the power to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. There's a lot of talk going around, and which people would like to know about our terminated city administrator, and it's stated, it's said in the paper last week, that he's going to have a hearing Wednesday the 11th. Is this going to be a closed hearing, or an open meeting?
That's the subject of some, some ongoing conversation. I believe that it ought to be a closed hearing. The reason for that is, it deals with some pretty personal things, items, but we are giving some serious consideration to at least having a large portion of that be open, but that, that has not been decided. It was originally scheduled, and it is currently planned to be a closed session, because it deals with personnel.
Well, what, will we know whether to, by Wednesday or not, whether to be there or not, or what?
Sure, the, the, one of the things on my outline of, kind of a strange format for me to conduct a hearing, but one of the items on there very early is to ask the villain what form he would like to receive the decision of the council. So, depending upon that, we'll structure how I can respond to the public. If he wants a phone call right after the meeting, then we can do that, and I can pretty quickly let the public know. But as soon as he knows, the next step will be to immediately let media.
But there would be, there would be no, no open meeting then?
Yeah.
You know, you, you talked around me there, I didn't quite get what all you were saying. You know, is, is there a sunshine law that says that this, that you cannot have an open hearing for this man? Now, I'm not here saying the man's innocent or guilty, but I'm here saying that the public would like to know, would hear the evidence, and come to their own conclusions for a change, instead of reading it in the newspaper, or hear Sam talking about it out in the alley. And this is what I'm saying, that I would like to, I'd like to have an open meeting, because I could sit there and listen to both sides, and draw my own conclusions, without no interruptions or arguments. I'd just like to, because you people do what you run for office, you go to a meeting and speak for yourself, so we could draw our own conclusions. Why can't you do, why can't you do it with this one?
Specifically, there are very real personnel issues that, that, there's a reason that the sunshine law allows you to close meetings for hiring, firing, and discipline. And this is both, can range into a disciplinary discussion, but it is certainly firing. Some of the discussion and items that are being, being brought out are best done in closed session. So, I understand the frustration and interest, and reality TV is wonderful, but we're talking about some, some very serious topics with, with a human being, and I think that he deserves that protection, the city certainly deserves that protection that's afforded by the sunshine law, which is to close for personnel issues. So, similar, we've done it in the past with other personnel, this is no different.
Hi.
The sunshine law doesn't say that it has to be closed, it's not prescribed by law.
No, it does not. It gives us the option.
It'd be the choice of the council.
Correct.
But Mr. Jimmy stated that he'd like to have an open session.
Yes, he would. Absolutely.
My question, or clarification, I guess, is the hearing for Robin Morris, was the difference there that she was a?
She was an elected official, that it does not, we can't close that for an elected official.
Well, I thought maybe, I say, I knew that, but maybe.
Right, it's a very different set of circumstances. Mr. Jimmy is not being impeached. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. We do have still some various board vacancies, obviously, I mentioned I put him off the board one appointment, because we're so close to an election. I have a meeting with human relations on two, on the 26th, to discuss their vacancies and get some direction, and also plan on discussing kind of their agenda, and I'd like to give some consideration to how that body maybe could be most effective. And then, Board of Adjustment, I have a request in to that body for a nomination, because I haven't received any from the general public, so hopefully, by the next month, we'll have something there. The city clerk had two items.
I received a phone call from Mr. Stokes from the Twisted Cat, he is requesting a catfish tournament on April 11th, and we need a council at the Riverfront.
Catfish tournament, we've done it before, I'll make a motion, we allow him to do a catfish tournament.
A second. Motion made, seconded, discussion, please call roll.
Is that just one day, or the weekend?
As far as I know, it's just one day.
And it's April 1?
E-11.
Please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
And the other was the public hearing that Carolyn Wood's probably just mentioned, too close, C D E G, right.
Easy for you to say.
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM on the 18th.
Location?
I believe it's here, right, right in here.
Unless there's objection, I'm going to postpone the discussion on whether we do a regular meeting, we have a long meeting tonight. I mean, old business, ISO impact studies continuing, we received some new information. Again, this is the fact that we had to re, we had to look at how we're structuring to pay for the fire engineer, and it included some utility payments and whatnot, so now we're looking at what that amount of money is for. It really seems that it is mostly there to give us the best ISO rating that we can get, and so, we are betting if this deployment of the money is the best way to get the best bang for the buck for ISO. And so, that's under, that's, we're looking into. Waste water, I'm sorry, waste disposal for non-recycles and non-yard waste has been in discussion. I have, we're collecting a couple of estimates, but we're also noticing that our existing contract may have some, some opportunities, but it's a little confused by the Star Hill ruin from VNR. It looks like if we keep it to a certain number of cubic yards and move it, you know, have it for just a few days, and then it's gone, that there may be an opportunity for us to reinstitute a process by which we offer this service to the public. So, we're still verifying that, but that's what it's looking like right now, so there is progress on that. I also wanted to let you know that I'm meeting with the lien holder for the Hodges Builder Building, there's two liens, remember, the larger of the two is substantial, and it pretty much keeps us from being able to sell it. And I'm meeting with that lien holder tomorrow morning to try to work something out, or see, see what maybe the possibilities are to put us in a better position to be able to move forward with that building. So, I wanted to report back to you on that. Any other old business that you guys have? Committees and boards, finance?
Would you like to expound a little bit on this resolution concerning the mid-year budget?
Sure. Chairman, this is just a formality of adoption of the mid-year budget, correct? It has to actually be a resolution, it's already been approved, but chairman indicated we needed an actual resolution.
Did we find some more money, did we spend less somewhere, or just, I mean, why is it, that we're doing this?
Does it change the original budget to reflect the figures that were on the second page, it's the revenues and expected?
It's changed since we, since we reviewed it, okay, this is to do the formality of adopting.
This just, this came off of the mid-year budget.
Do you have a motion for this?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution?
Okay, a motion.
A second.
Motion made, and seconded, discussion, please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Anything else for finance?
No, that's all for finance.
Public safety?
Public safety. We had the names of three gentlemen to become firemen, I make a motion to full counsel that we accept the names of Matt Singleton, Brian Chapman, Jamil Chapman, to be brought on as firemen pending their background checks and.
I'll further that motion. Motion made, seconded, discussion, please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Upstee.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
There was also, there was a slight mistake in our minutes, with what we talked about, we want to sell the panel truck that currently is in the fire, or, yeah, the fire department. We stated that as truck number 1520, which is, in fact, it is 1519. So, I make a motion to full counsel that we allow the fire department to sell truck number 1519, the panel truck, with any proceeds to be kept for use in purchasing a new fire truck at some later date.
Motion made, seconded, discussion?
Don't we have to take sealed bids for the, the fire department?
Yeah, yeah.
You might the city administrator do it, though, right? Not the fire department.
Well, yeah, the, the city administrator will advertise it.
Do we need to amend the?
Do we have to put a time on it?
As far as the time that bids would do?
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I would amend my motion that bids would have to be received by the close of business on February 27th.
Is that going to give time for ad fees this week?
Oh, it's two and a half weeks.
Give you two weeks.
You can't count this week unless you've got the.
They won't make the paper.
I don't think it.
Might be even the 25th.
I don't, my, my, my question was concerning the motion stating the fire department would sell the equipment.
It'll be advertised by decision, but the fire department is wanting to sell it.
Right, but they don't have any authority.
You think that won't be enough time for the paper to print it?
Example.
Example.
Okay, well, I would amend that motion for the bids to be in by the end of business on February 6th.
March 6th.
March of 6th.
Well, I was just, once our council meeting, we want them before our council.
Now, that's why I said the 27th first, because that's before the council meeting.
Same March time, and same March 6th? It's a Sunday, March 2nd.
Jeff, did you have a second on that?
Yeah.
Second on that?
Yeah.
So, we're in discussion, you're amending your original motion, I need you to rescind your second.
I rescinded my motion.
Okay, indeed, so now, feel free to tailor your motion.
Well, if the 27th wasn't enough time, making it the second doesn't make the paper come out anymore, so that does no good, really.
Do you think, Jeff, as your committee, who I think is all here, do you feel that you would need to come back to the committee, or could we just bring that to full counsel?
I would be in favor of bringing it to full counsel.
How is it not enough time for the paper?
She says it's enough time.
It was a bad time, so.
Can be added into by this week?
No, it, it won't be in this week, but it would be two times, it would, it would run two times before the bids had to be in.
So, when, when would you like it, bid to?
Well, I would like my original motion for the February 27th, if that's going to be enough time to let people bid.
Is enough time to get the papers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
Wait a second.
I second.
Any more discussion? Please call roll.
Could you restate the motion, please, because I'm not really sure.
To allow the city administrator to advertise we sell truck 1519, the panel truck with proceeds being used for a new fire truck with the close, which bids do in by February 27th, close of business.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
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 Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
We received bids on the 2005 Chevrolet Impala, a police car, I make a motion that we accept Ben's auto salvage bid of $1,001 for this vehicle.
A second. Motion made, seconded, discussion, please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis? Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And that's all we have for public services.
Thank you, sir. Infrastructure.
We received the one handwritten bid for abatement at 500 Debless, and I believe everyone's got the memo from the building inspector, and also from the city administrator concerning that bid, has everybody read those? It was difficult to read that handwritten, it also didn't state that that person had any insurance, or actually a business in order to do that abatement, in addition to the wanting to pay an outstanding, whatever they had with the city. So, I don't know if we need to address the memo that Kelly gave us, and discuss having city personnel do the abatement instead of that.
And probably the appropriate name will be to go ahead and make a motion to reject all bids, which would be one of the options.
Right.
Unless somebody wants to make a motion for a second.
I would, I would move to reject that bid on the form and lack of proven insurance.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Good. That would be an opportunity, an action you'd like to take. Kelly, do you want to, unless that you, you recommend, and believe that we could probably handle this?
Yeah.
I believe I'm saying this, I believe so, I believe so, recommendation.
Is that, and was the court ordered abatement on the property? Or, I mean, is that going to make any difference on that, that we aren't having a salvage company do the abatement?
No, I don't think, because the court orders that it gets done, if the city's going to help him, is that a endeavor that complies with the court order? As far as, you know, staying in fines and stuff, that part, you know, the city can't agree to negate part of the court order, the court can do that itself, as part of, you know, a recommendation with the prosecutor and the building inspector, as part of some deal that's made, but that has to come from the court at that part.
Would you like me to, to verify that there's no problem with, with, with.
Is it?
Send me.
I think that we could go ahead and move that if, as long as there is no issue with that, that we allow the plan by the city administrator to have city forces perform this work and affect this abatement. As long as there's, there's nothing in the courts that would not allow for that.
Yeah, it, it's just that you can't have this part where we'll not, we'll eliminate some fine that's been assessed for a portion of the fine. That part you can't do, the mayor's only power is to either pardon, to full pardon, but, you know, that's a sort of a partial.
I'll see if this affects, basically, it's our determination that we could handle this in-house, so the scrap, we're not going to do the bid process.
That's correct.
And, and we can handle it. For one bid we have. So it won't affect the abatement of the judge, but I'll verify that. So we have, we have a motion, we have a second? Actually, we ought to, we ought to get a second.
Second.
A second.
I want to make sure everybody's clear that the recommendation was, because normally when this happens, the city forces that does this, you know, they make out a bill, it's not paid to make a special tax bill. But they need to keep track of the scrap that is sold and whatever other revenue that would come in and sold to make the levying. It's a special tax bill. To be, to be clear.
Yes.
So they owe five hundred, say five hundred dollars, and we get three hundred out of scrap, so now we'll just two hundred.
Right.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any more discussion, please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Anything else for infrastructure?
I don't have anything.
I, I have something if I could bring it up. There's been a considerable talk recently about flower removal in the cemetery. One lady, well, more than one, had said they had their flowers or plants, whatever, out, less than the ten day limit. When they went back, they were in the trash. Others were behind the shed. And one lady whose flowers were in the trash, said the gentleman working there, she said, "You must have picked mine up first because they're in the bottom." And he said, "Well, I did because they're close to the shed." And she says, "Well, I don't like it very much." And he said, "Well, evidently a lot of other people don't because we've had quite a few calls." I'm not accusing anyone of any wrongdoing. I would like to suggest that the city administrator go over the ordinance, one three five point zero six zero, with the city employees. If they are following that ordinance, everything's very good, cop the city. If they're not, maybe they should be reminded of what the ordinance does say and what is allowed or not allowed.
Be glad to do that, absolutely. Thanks for bringing it to your attention. Anything else for infrastructure? Enterprise?
So as far as enterprise goes, you guys, I'll have you all take over on this.
Well, we have, Kelly and I would like to recommend that we go ahead and terminate the pay station for a number of reasons. One, another business account offers this service, it's a duplicate of a service, which is the only reason we started it in the first place. Two, it, the, when we, when we asked for an analysis of how much it's costing us to do it in terms of time and hours compared to what it's making, we're losing money. So the only reason to do it be because it produces a service that's valued to the citizens, which that service exists through other mechanisms. And functionally, it represents a tremendous constant set of interruptions to, particularly to Christina in handling it. So it's, it has a significant effect on kind of workflow issues. So we'd like to recommend that we go ahead and terminate at whatever period is convenient for you to kind of wrap. We'd like to terminate the operation of the pay station in City Hall. What else is there for pay station? I believe Leslie's has a pay station.
Is that for the electric bills and stuff?
We'll certainly pick it back up if, if a business isn't providing a service, but, you know, we keep that that was something that was worth our time to do, but.
I make a motion that we terminate the pay station.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion? Please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Upstate?
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Here's Christina, thanks you, Dave. I would like to ask that the council, this came up in the department head meeting, I'd like to ask that the council review the ordinance regarding where we put in water service, apparently we don't charge anything for that. The material cost is substantial in some cases, so I'd maybe like the enterprise maybe of ordinance, maybe to go take a look at that and maybe talk with the department head and, maybe Dale? That's correct. Go ahead and talk with Dale directly and see if you can determine a system that seems to make more sense, given the particular rise in cost of materials.
Is that ordinance number?
I don't have it in front of me, again, for you.
And so we're talking about installing the infrastructure for somebody to have?
Water. New, new, yeah. So that's just a request. Then I think I'd leave it to Mona to bring up the employee handle policy.
Well, I have it also, I don't have it printed out because I handed out all my copies.
Why are you addressing that?
And so.
I'm sorry, that ordinance, I think you settled on the topic.
What was it?
Procedure for connection to public for order.
Seven oh five oh five oh?
Seven oh five oh five oh.
Sorry.
I got to check my list.
And so we had a discussion regarding maybe the need for a policy to kind of govern what happens when we have a threat from an employee for the city. And I don't know, should I read this or just hand it over to Mr. Rat to look at it? What do you think?
Either way, we could go ahead and read it.
Okay, so I'll just read, Mona kind of figured out this language and I think it sounds.
Stole it from a couple of persons.
Yeah, and I think it sounds appropriate, so. Read, "The safety of the city of Louisiana's employees, officials, clients, and visitors is an important concern. Threats threatening behavior or acts of violence against employees, clients, visitors, or others while on city of Louisiana property, conducting business or receiving services from the city of Louisiana won't be tolerated. Violations of this policy will lead to disciplinary action, possible dismissal, and criminal prosecution as appropriate. Any person who engages in violent or threatening behavior on the city of Louisiana's property or who uses any electronic means to make a threat against a staff member, volunteer, or official of the city shall be removed from the premises as quickly as safety permits and shall remain off premises pending the outcome of an investigation. Subsequent to the investigation, the city of Louisiana will respond appropriately. This response may include and is not limited to suspension and or termination of any business relationship, reassignment of job duties, suspension or termination of employment, and/or the pursuit of criminal prosecution of the person or persons involved."
So this is.
So maybe we can discuss what everyone thinks about that.
In terms of like including even the employee manual?
Yes.
What do you want of this ordinance?
I think we can just include.
I think the employee manual would cut this.
We could probably do that, I'd like to distribute it as an addendum called Employee's Meeting, and then put it in our digital copy, pursue it to any corrections or adjustments the council has to make.
And you have it.
And I have a copy, or you could actually do, send it to me digitally, yes?
I'd like to ask Mr. Rat what state law says about somebody that.
Says it's a crime.
Yeah. You know, if they approach somebody or threaten somebody or bodily harm. I, I don't have the site to that, but as we discussed at the, at the committee meetings, that's actually a criminal offense to threaten a governmental officer. So it's. So this is, this ordinance is to?
It allows us to deal with the employment issue. It's not an ordinance, but an addendum to the employee handbook.
So that, so that the city can act appropriately against any people?
We probably ought to be getting this in discussion, someone want to make a motion to add this to the claim.
I make a motion that the language that I just read, we add it to the employee handbook, dealing with threats against.
So now we're in discussion.
If I could address what the council had said, in other words, this, this is the point manual, then it makes it quite clear. If somebody makes a threat of physical harm against an official of the, the mayor could say, okay, you suspend it, you have to leave, and you have to stay off city, city property, or you'll be arrested for trespassing.
I think even more, more important than that, because I think I already can do that by, by state law, but it makes it clear to the employee, it's just, it's just a vehicle for communication about what that expectation is and what that consequence can be. So it seems appropriate to put it in the employee.
I would like to have time to read and study it before I go.
Can you hand it over to you? Well, I will, but I will not the motion that I made.
I would like to have Mr. Rat read that and make any necessary changes to language so that we don't get caught in a tight spot sometime and. I, I just read it. I think it's okay. And, and it's like, you know, I, I could, you know, make it sound more legally flowery, if you will, and, and make it sound like a law or a statute or something like that, but, but what you're looking for is something in the, in an employee manual, which is a guide to conduct for employees. So isn't it, isn't it better if it's in actual English and not legally? Yeah, but I just didn't want to leave a problem to come up and say, oh, you can't do that because. Yeah. I picked this up this morning.
No, no you didn't, I handed it out tonight to you.
If you'd like more time, we can, I can post case.
Well, we've seconded the motion, so we need a vote.
If we have to vote, or can we, does it bother?
Somebody could withdraw themselves.
Oh, my, in the session, I think that right now, if we go ahead and add this, and if Dawn has anything that is really upset, I'm going to take it. But right now, if we've got a month and we still don't have anything else in our handbook, if you think that's reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Okay, the motion stands, any more discussion? Please call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
President?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Okay, thank you.